Good morning. We'll call to order the special meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board for Wednesday, August the 30th. To get us started, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to those who are with us in the audience today, and thank you to those who may be watching online. I have one item to deal with before we get to work, and that is the absence of Tim Pittman. He notified me this morning that he would be absent due to some work conflicts. And so I believe it is our procedure that when we have an absence, that has to be approved by this body. Is that correct, Madam Secretary?
That's correct.
Do you need a motion for that, or is it just... Okay. So would anybody like to make a motion to excuse Tim's absence?
I'll make a motion to excuse Tim's absence.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. One other item I'll mention, I've talked to Lisa about this. I'm going to... You'll be getting a request via email to change the regularly scheduled September meeting to another date. We can't do that at this meeting. But Lisa will get with staff and find some dates and times that might work, and then we'll see what everybody else's availability is. So just a reminder, as we get down to business, because this is a special meeting, the only items that we will be discussing or dealing with is the table of uses and proceeding through those as we had started at the special meeting in July. And we had stopped at the residential designation. Matt, do you have anything for us before we get started?
No. You do have a copy of the official zoning map of the town of Oak Island in front of you, just to give you kind of a spatial awareness. So, you know, we've talked a little bit about where these zoning districts are. You know, it's a pretty straightforward map, but certainly if you have any questions about that. In addition, as you're all also aware, the town wrapped up some public engagement survey that we had online related to this. You all should have received a copy of those responses before your last meeting, and hopefully you've had a chance to review those, to see what kind of responses we got. But that's all I had for you today.
Do we have a way to break those responses down into different categories so that we could pull out things that apply, might apply to the table of uses?
We can certainly work on that for you. The survey form that we used has... does have the ability to generate a word cloud. If anybody's seen anything like that, it kind of makes the words you see a lot bigger. We can certainly produce that for you as well. In addition, staff could probably go through and do some tallying of like general overview style comments. I've certainly reviewed all these. Certainly see, you know, quite a few different trends going on in here. But we can certainly... We can absolutely work on breaking that down for you to kind of put that into a little bit of perspective. I know, you know, anytime you get a open-ended survey, there's gonna be... You know, there's gonna be a variance in how people reply, but usually there's a common theme, you know, amongst that reply that we could certainly work on categorizing for you guys and help you put some context around that. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Bradley, I think you might have had a question about the table of uses and our consolidation of those.
He's working on that for our next meeting.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah. And just for the benefit of the entire board, you know, you guys have already started reviewing that table of uses, certainly on the schedule I have going forward. The first part, whatever I can get through of drafting those changes, including anything that we need to consolidate, I'll have for you at the regular September meeting, is my intention. So whatever we're able to get through based on our review here and staff's workload, we're gonna start cranking that out and having that for you to review. Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may ask Matt a question. So Matt, is that the effort you were undertaking with trying to organize, maybe consolidate based on SIC codes, NAICS codes, other types of industry codes?
That would be all in there.
So we can have best practices like other towns to do that?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. That'll be a part of that effort. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to make sure that we're all on the same page, I did put this information in an email to you all this past week, weekend. We're gonna be starting on residential. That's where we left off the last meeting. And for this first portion of the exercise, we are dealing with the S's in our table of uses. So it doesn't mean we're not gonna deal with the other... the Ps and the Ps's and the S's's, but it was determined by council that we work on the S's first, and so that's where we're gonna... what we're gonna do. So we'll be going through this list and stopping anywhere that there's an S and discussing what we need to do with it. Is it a... Do we feel like it's appropriate for the zoning district that it's in? And then do we need to do anything further with it? Do we need to add supplemental regulations to it? Any questions? Okay. So the first one I see on my list, and if I skip one, you all call my attention to it, is dwelling garage apartment as an accessory structure. That is a special use in the R6 MF zoning district. Have any comments on...
Well, you know, I'm a big affordable housing advocate. And for one thing, you know, I don't see any MF on the map. You know, I think multifamily, whatever shape that takes, is gonna be crucial to bringing in some affordable housing. Obviously, I have no expectation of that happening on the island, but on the mainland, I think we really need to decide where we want that because we are in desperate need of it. I had a conversation with the police chief, and he expressed to me how difficult it is to get officers to come here to work because they have a lot of experienced officers that want to. And then when they find out they can't afford to live here, they change their mind. And, you know, he tries to point out, well, there's a little bit more affordability in other communities a little further out from here. And the problem with that is that basically every municipality is trying to hire officers. So if they're gonna live in another town, why not work there? And I'm sure that that's true of all of the rest of the departments in the town, and I know it's true for, you know, all of our businesses that are struggling to get help, so...
So Matt, on our map, I do not find the R6 MF. Am I overlooking it?
It's not. There's no town... There's no portion of the town that's currently...
There's not one there. Okay. So I know that's an issue that people feel passionate about and care about. However, establishing workforce housing is not the purview of this... of the planning board. We would... We might could deal with zoning so that we create areas where something like that could be considered, but our only... Our only action on something like that would be if someone brought a request before us for approval. Matt, do you have any... What would be your input on the R6 MF? We've also previously noted that we don't currently have an O and I anywhere in Oak Island.
Yeah. It's not totally unusual to have a zoning district that's not currently applied anywhere on the map. You know, the intention there would be if somebody wanted to seek a rezoning, to take advantage of that particular zoning district for a parcel of land, then there's already kind of a holding category there for, let's say, somebody wants to build a... On the mainland, wants to build a single-family development, and they're intending to have garage apartments as dwellings as an accessory unit in there, and they know that that's their, you know, their product anyway. They would... They could seek a rezoning. Then it would... It would come to this board for advisory opinion and then council for whether to even, you know, zone the property to allow something like that. And same thing with O and I. You know, if there's uses that are specifically in the O and I, somebody wants to do an O and I development, well, you've gotta find the property and then seek a zoning map amendment in order to establish it. So it's a little bit of an extra layer of regulation to give it that extra scrutiny because when somebody applies for a zoning map amendment, you know, this board and council has to take in the entirety of the table of uses, and you say, oh, well, you know, we don't... You might say, or council might say, or anybody might say that, you know, that this particular use isn't really suitable for that, so you need to take that into consideration when you, you know, consider that zoning map amendment proposal.
If I could just point out, regardless of whether it's up to, you know, the planning board or whom it's up to, to me, that's a little bit more of a reactive position. I think it would be smart for the town to be proactive since we know it's desperately needed and decide ahead of time where we would like that to be. And that may facilitate somebody trying to do it. Currently, if I were looking to do something like that, and I look at this map, I would think, well, apparently they don't want it.
And typically, you kind of keep those... You consider those kind of high-level questions through the lens of your comprehensive land use plan. And I've communicated to this board that council was nice enough to include an update of our comprehensive land use plan in the budget. So certainly that kind of long-range, you know, hey, do we want this and where do we want it to go? Where would we want it to go? You know, gets wrapped up into that kind of effort when we update the comprehensive land use plan. And I'm already pulling example RFPs so we can get that rocking and rolling just as fast as possible, so...
Sounds good. Okay.
Was there previously an area zoned 6MF?
There may have been. If there was, it was quite some time ago, certainly before my tenure here. I'd have to pull our resident historians to, you know, pull some zoning maps to see what kind of changes have been made. There used to be a couple of different R6's here in the town that have been merged and reapplied. There was like a R6A and a R6B, I think, even. So it was broken down a little bit more than it is right now in our...
Okay. Thanks, Matt. So to keep us moving through our list, then, we have an S for the dwelling garage apartment as accessory and the dwelling multifamily, and noting that they're currently allowed in the R6 MF, which I'm also noting that we currently don't have. My question is, would everyone be agreeable then to leaving these here but adding supplemental conditions to those?
Madam Chair, I showed dwelling condominium in R6 MF. Do I have a different list?
I have that prior...
It's in there also.
Right above it. Yes. So in 6... R6 MF, we have dwelling condominium, dwelling garage apartment as accessory, and dwelling multifamily.
Okay.
Multifamily. So to your point.
Yeah. It's not on... Yeah. It's not on the list that you have in front of you. Okay. So dwell... In dwelling condominium, we also have as a special use in the CLD district. Matt, would there be... Because we have residential in our... In some of our CLD areas on the mainland, would there be a reason to put some of these multifamily things into the CLD?
It certainly could make sense. The ones where we have them are usually in a planned unit development that was approved based on a site plan, you know, and a special use permit or a conditional use permit if it was a long time ago. And they likely... They should have vested rights to develop based on that permit. So any changes wouldn't necessarily affect them unless we get into a condition where a large storm comes and does a bunch of damage to those things, you know. And so if there's some in there and we're okay with what we have in there, I mean, it certainly could behoove us to make sure that the table of uses is reflective of what we have and what we want to keep there, I guess is my point. Yeah. Also, kind of a note, dwelling condominium and dwelling multifamily are essentially the same thing.
Yes.
Condominium is actually an ownership structure, not a type of development. So that might be one that we look to consolidate those two forms together because what people think of as a condo is the same thing as a multifamily building. They just own the unit versus rent the unit. So that's something that this board could certainly consider consolidating the two together. Like I said, with what we've got in the CLD right now, it wouldn't be unusual to add it as a special use or something like that in the CLD, since we already have those.
Would there be consensus, then, to add those to the CLD district and make them all S's with supplemental conditions?
PS, permitted with special use, right? Is that the appropriate approach, Matt?
Well, you know, once again, that's a kind of a discretionary decision as to whether these should be subject to a special use permit review or not. You know, if you feel that it rises to the level that there should be some discretionary standards, like, you know, does it harmonize some property values? Is it in harmony with the surrounding development and consistent with the comprehensive land use plan? Those are the kind of standards that you... If you think multifamily needs to rise to that standard, then you would keep it as a special use. If you feel confident that with the appropriate supplemental regulations, you don't need those extra discretionary standards, then you would move it to a permitted with supplemental regulations. Really, it's a judgment call. I can't really make that for you.
For me, in the commercial density district, I... Permitted with special use is defined would be acceptable, but open to further discussion. Because... But just for clarification for our new members, the S's's require a public hearing to discuss those points. So it's a whole level of escalated review, just for clarification for everybody.
Well, to be perfectly honest, just from my personal experience with affordable housing projects, trying to get through a town, the neighbors have a lot to say about it. With that said, I think probably a special use is appropriate.
So the S's, you're saying?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So if everyone's in agreement, then we'll change the S's to the S's, and we'll also... Matt, if you think it's appropriate, move... Allow those also in the CLD district.
As S's's, correct?
As S's's.
Okay. And then what about the dwelling garage apartment as accessory?
I don't think that needs a special use permit because that's just one unit.
But that's a separate... Separate building is the way I'm reading that, right, Matt?
Yeah.
It's a separate garage apartment from...
As an... So when you say as an accessory, that that means a detached...
Right.
An accessory building is a detached structure from the primary.
So do we even allow a dwelling in a garage? I thought we were limited to like one kitchen... One kitchen per lot.
That's right.
So that should be removed from R6 MF.
So we should take that out, then, from R6 if it's not allowed?
Correct.
Once again, that's the R6 MF, which we don't have at all in the town. So it would be a rezoning, should anyone even seek that type of product.
And then if we have...
I don't know that you have a lot of, you know, instances where that would happen, but, you know, it is in there. You're right. Once again, you know, it... But who's the town to not categorically exclude a use of land from the zoning unless it presents a real identifiable public health safety hazard? Otherwise, it's good to at least have something or somewhere that a use of land could potentially go.
Do we not currently have one of those down on East Oak Island Drive?
We've got a few that predate our current ordinance. They're, you know, legal nonconformities. We've got a few duplexes as well. There were zoning in areas on the island where a duplex was permitted, and we've got a bunch of those on the island as well. As long as that use continues and they don't violate that legal nonconformity ordinance, they keep right on rocking and rolling.
The one I'm thinking of is new in the last year.
Yep.
And it looks like there's a vacant lot that's intended to have residents built on it, but for now, there's a garage with stairs going upstairs.
Oh, okay, yeah. So there's no... The only structure on there is the garage.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And the upstairs is a dwelling unit.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's actually the primary structure. That's not an accessory structure.
Okay.
And that is the dwelling unit that is on that piece of property.
Okay.
What we're talking about here is if you have a whole house dwelling unit and on that same piece of property, you're gonna build a detached garage with another dwelling unit on top of it.
So in that case, that property owner would be prohibited from building another house on that property? Would be the restriction that they would have created for themselves.
That's right.
Understood.
They probably didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Well, they could, you know, go in and retrofit the existing dwelling to make it not a dwelling unit. Essentially, you'd tear out the kitchen or something like that.
Understood.
Once that was proved, then they could have the full house on there.
Yeah. I mean, on the one hand, being able to have a garage apartment, it does give an opportunity to rent that out to somebody, but it also would give an opportunity to rent that out for a short-term rental also. And so we probably... If we want to do that or not.
Yeah. That was... I think that was one of the things that I saw in the survey about limiting short-term rentals throughout the island and certain parts of the island. That was one thing that the citizens spoke about a lot. But I see your point as far as workforce housing.
Yeah. It could open a... You know, it would be good if it were used for that, but we all know, you know, pretty much all the rentals on the island end up...
So are we removing that from R6 MF?
Once again, I'd probably... Since there's not any R6 MF that's in there right now, we could certainly work up some supplemental regulations and probably keep it in that district with the knowledge that it would require not just a special use permit, but you'd have to get it rezoned first and then come back for a special use permit before you could even do anything like that.
Okay. Good.
Right. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Moving on, the next one I'm showing on the list is dwelling over a business. That is a special use in the CB, CR, and CLD districts.
We have those currently.
We do. Right beside the barbecue house, we have some dwellings over residential in the CB on the island.
Right.
Can I ask a question, Matt? If we go in and change these special uses, don't that... The property that's there now, don't that turn into nonconforming?
Well, it depends on how you change it. So if it's... If they don't have a special use permit to begin with, let's say they were under the old ordinance where it was a permitted use, well, they're already illegal nonconformity because they don't even have a special use permit, which they're required to get. If you add supplemental regulations that limit it to less than what's already there, then potentially, yes. Or if, like we talked about with the multifamily in the CLD, if you were to remove that as a use at all, and we have some out there, then they wouldn't even have the option of coming back for a special use permit at that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to these three zoning districts, is consensus that we would want to keep them as special uses and add supplemental regulations or change those, as Carrie has previously mentioned, to permitted with special reg... or supplemental regulations? Anybody have thoughts on that? So they currently today, Matt, are where in the CB?
Yeah. Most of them that I'm aware of are here in the CB on the island, along Oak Island Drive. We have a few right over here, and we have some down in the Yopon section as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a good thing to have because it really, you know, is the highest and best use for the property. I have personally tried to figure out how to do it on a property, and it's... You just... You really have to have enough space. It has to be a, you know, significant size piece of property to, you know, meet all the standards, and I just wasn't able to make it happen.
Yeah. So I think the zoning districts that we have them in are appropriate. The question before us is, do we keep them under a special use permit with supplemental regulations, or do we set up our supplemental regulations such that those could be permitted in there? It seems like that those could just be a permitted use.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah.
I think it enhances the commercial business district, actually.
Okay. So we'll change those to permitted with supplemental regulations.
So those are PS, right?
PS.
Right.
That's correct. Next one I'm showing is dwelling townhouse development. Again, that's a special use in the R6 MF, which we don't currently have, and the O and I, which we don't currently have. You know, the thought could be that we also add that to the CLD district or that we just leave it here, knowing that folks who might want to do a townhouse development would have to get rezoned.
And just as a FYI, the Pine Forest planned unit development that is in this... Mostly in the CLD does, under its master land use plan, have an allowance for what we call townhouses. They call it attached single-family, but it's a townhouse-style product. So we do have some planned out there.
So it would make sense to add in CLD?
And...
And they would become with supplemental?
Supplemental, yes.
S's?
S's.
And add in CLD?
And add it in the CLD. That's correct. Okay. And that's all I'm showing in the residential section? Am I missing anything?
Yeah. I show rooming and boarding house and small childcare center.
Oh, yes, you're correct. You're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Oh, I turned page. I'm sorry.
So we're showing that as a special use in the R6 MH district, which we do have, and also in the O and I, which we do not. Matt, do we currently have any of these?
I'm not aware of a single one that we have in the town, ma'am.
I think that something like this in a residential area seems like it certainly rises to the level of a special use permit with supplemental...
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Regulations.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And our... And our... Just for FYI, our definition of a boarding house is a building other than a hotel or motel where for compensation, meals are served and rooms are rented. So I think you're probably right on, based on that definition.
Right. And then the next is small childcare center. We have that in the R20, the R6... Excuse me. And the R6 MF as special uses. So when we went through the educational section, we took... We took the... We took the special uses out of the R20 zoning district, I believe, and we changed everything to a PS.
Matt, could I ask a question about the...
Matt, could I ask a question about the previous table? The rooming and boarding house, could that be somewhat viewed as a bed and breakfast?
Yeah, that, that's one that we probably need to consider, whether that's worth consolidating or not.
Right.
Typically, I believe, I'd have to look in our, I'm looking through our definitions right now to give you some context. Usually a bed and breakfast is also where the owner occupies it.
Right.
Whereas a boarding house, based on this definition, owner would not necessarily be required to occupy that, that home, but it would probably be a similar form to what you would see in a bed and breakfast, right?
Yeah, I just, you know, I wouldn't wanna take a bed and breakfast opportunity out of an area, even though I don't believe a bed and breakfast area would go in six MH or a non-existing zone of O and I. But, you know, one day, somebody could still choose to build one with a marsh front view and, and, you know, that could be very, um, a very good thing, you know, a good atmosphere. So I wouldn't wanna take that out of that zoning.
Yeah, I mean, if, and if the board, uh, you know, as we just talked about, you know, they're a similar form. Um, you know, if, uh, as part of consolidation, the board said, well, we prefer, we'd prefer to make sure that all these are owner occupied. You know, we could probably consolidate them all under a bed and breakfast and then they would be required to be owner occupied. Um, if that's, you know, a more, you know, tenable situation to the board versus having somebody who might build a bed and breakfast and then go, you know, live in Holden Beach or something, live a whole nother town away or something like that.
But how about if, like, BRBO and all that stuff, if people rent rooms?
Yeah, um, that could certainly, uh, potentially fall under that category. Short-term rentals are a, a whole gangly beast that I think probably warrants a in-depth discussion beyond the scope of what we're talking about here, but definitely something to keep in your mind as we go forward.
Well, honestly, having the owner present would be a real asset.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that would, that would need to be part of our supplemental regulations is to make sure there's an on-site owner.
Um, I will note, uh, unless we have any other questions about boarding houses and bed and breakfasts. Okay. Small childcare centers are defined as a center within a residence. So that's what you might otherwise define as a home daycare. Um, you know, you might have a, somebody who keeps five or six kids in their house. They, they get a state permit, they get a state license to do that from Department of Health and Human Services. So while it does seem odd that it's in a residential zoning district and it's called a childcare center, um, these are actually, per our definition, only allowed in a single-family residence. So just to add some context to that as well.
Matt, any idea why they're being shown as special uses in some residential zoning areas and not in others? They're not allowed in others?
That's a, a great question, uh, that I don't know the answer to as far as why we would, uh, you know, especially if you develop supplemental regulations, why you would say in one area it might rise to a certain level of scrutiny versus not in another.
I know that we had a special use permit for one in a residence several years ago, and I, I cannot remember offhand what zone it was in. And I don't know if they changed zoning just to, to allow that to happen or not, but it has come up before. I just, I don't know if that's helpful or not.
I mean, I can't come up with a reason to not allow it in any of the residential districts.
Yeah, it seemed, I mean, it seems logical if it's in three residential districts, why it's not in the other.
Yeah, and it's specifically designed to be within a single-family residence is capped at this number of children that you can have, et cetera.
And it's gonna be more stringically regulated by the state and checked upon than anything else.
I'd just, I'd like to make a comment. That was one of the things that came up in our UDO review, that the town does not take the responsibility to check licensing for daycare centers. So just from the public and for the rest of the board, we, that is not a town responsibility under the current revised UDO.
And, and you can, um, uh, having a child myself, uh, they have a really super helpful website at the Department of Health and Human Services where you can search all the home daycares in an area, the daycare centers, and find out if they've had violations, what inspections, what violations they had. And it's, uh, so if anybody wants that additional information about licensing and permitting, et cetera, there, there's plenty of resources out there to check them out.
So, so are we saying that we would, um, have permitted with special stipulate, to the group? Permitted with special stipulations through all the residential zones?
That's what we did in the, um, for the educational. I mean, I realize this is not a school, it's a, it's a home daycare. But, um, and to, to Matt's point, in our supplemental regulations, then, we can be capped at the number of students. We can stipulate the hours of operation.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
When I would do theirs, probably research what the, uh, what the actual state criteria is for a home daycare.
Right.
Uh, and closely match that in our ordinance in some way, yeah.
So PS is in all residential zones?
PSs.
Yeah, I actually did that when my kids were little and, um, the neighbors loved it 'cause they all wanted me to keep their children. There's a desperate need for that also. And of course, I couldn't keep the whole neighborhood of kids, so.
I can, I can speak from experience, it's definitely needed.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's like that wraps us up in the residential category, if I didn't miss anything else. Uh, so now we're going into retail sales and service. And the first one I'm showing is audi- audio/video production facilities, which is allowed in the CB district. Matt, do we have a definition for audio/video?
Let, let me look.
What is that?
Some folks, I think, do that kind of thing in their home as a home business.
Let's, let me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get between the table of uses and the definition section. So give me just a second here to see if I can pull something up. See anything under the As, let's check under the Bs, and the Ss too. I do, I don't think it's totally unusual to have a difference between the CB and the CLD because, uh, you know, something that's even supported in our comprehensive land use plan is the commercial development on the island, having a different character and nature than that on the mainland. Um, so having the special use permit and those extra discretionary criteria that Town Council looks at, um, you know, could probably speak to that, that difference between why it's a P in one and a, and a S, uh, in the other. Bear with me just a second here, we've got a lot of definitions, still not enough.
So would permitted with special use in CB be appropriate?
I think, once again, that's a.
It seems like a business, it's a business function, a business operation. I'm curious as to what the definition is. Are we talking about something that's in a, an office-type space? Are we talking about a mega warehouse that's?
Uh, I don't see anything under studio, didn't see anything under audio, let me check video too. It is not defined in our ordinance currently.
So maybe this becomes one, then, Matt, that you find some other.
Yeah.
There, there might be another line item that, uh, is similar in nature. Having said that, then, um, do we wanna leave the, leave it as special use in the CB district with supplemental conditions?
And the, and just to kind of clarify, the crux of that question is, um, is the character and nature of development on the mainland and the, or, or on the island different enough from the mainland to require a heightened level of scrutiny, should somebody wanna establish this type of business on the island? Because like you said, it is permitted in the CLD. You know, we could, you know, looking at, since it's not defined, if we leave it as is in the ordinance, I would certainly seek to establish a definition for that, so everybody knows what it's talking about. If it's, uh, consol- if there's a, you know, a, a definition from another code that we can pull in that also consolidates it, we definitely look at supplemental standards to make sure that that's, I, I think people probably worry about noise and et cetera, I guess, maybe for something like that, audio studios especially. Um, you know, so you might look at making sure that it's indoors and you don't have any, uh, outside stuff, things like that.
So PS instead of S, since it's permitted in CLD to the board?
Well, I think CLD would be off island, so it should be more easily available than on island. I think there's, you know, the size of the company is going to determine whether they start on island and outgrow the island and move to CLD or, or this, this. I mean, it could be anything from, you know, green room to shooting, you know, commercials.
Right.
To, you know, you, uh, Realtor videos, all sorts of things. So I don't think you're gonna find anywhere on island to make a very large production studio.
Right.
So I think, you know, you could start here, but you would ultimately grow and, and the CLD would be a easier place for you to grow to. So I think on island, it, it may should be a touch, you know, maybe SS, a little bit harder to obtain.
I think that's a good, uh, I think that's a good recommendation until we better define, uh, better define what we're talking about.
Yeah, at least give it a definition of what, what it's considered to be.
Good, thank you, David.
Madam Chair, I'd like to address the next item. It says it's a P, automobile parking garages or parking lots independent?
Yes, I have a star by that.
Um, I think that's something we should discuss, um, for CB, which is mostly island.
Right.
Right? So I think that we need to define some supplemental regulations around that on the island. So I'd, I'd like to recommend that we make that, um, an SS as opposed to a P.
Okay, and, and would it, I mean, would CLD be an appropriate place to also have that?
I, I think it could be.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
In fact, probably more appropriate there than on the island.
So if we make that a PS and maybe a PS on the CLD?
So SS in CB, which is island, and PS in CLD, commercial low-density?
I would be in agreement with that.
I don't think so. We, we do have one on island currently.
What about the?
Where?
Ones that are already here, what would that do, what would that do to them?
Saint James Parking Lot, that's, uh, right beside, it was a pet shop. It's now a Realtor office, um, that's independent, that's not attached to their beach club, which is right down the road, but it's, it's independent of that beach club. So that is a independent parking lot. That's all that's done out there, there's no other use of that piece of property that I'm aware of anyway. So we do have one, I just wanted to make sure that that's known.
We're under automobile parking garages or parking lots independent?
So then that, that one was created under the, it was permitted?
Mm-hmm, permitted use, that's right.
So that would not change, that would not change that?
No.
It would be any future?
Yeah, and, you know, the, you know, the point about legal nonconformities, there's not any structure there. It's literally just, there, there's, it's gonna be an unusual event that damages fifty percent of that, uh, just piece of land. I'd say the island might not be here anymore, something like that.
Bigger worries.
So I'm, I'm, I'm good with going with, uh, Mr. Purser's recommendation that we, um, do PS or SS on the island and PS in the CLD.
No, my recommendation was for the audio/video, not the parking lot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was Melanie, I think.
All right, as long as we've got it right on here, I'm sorry for miscrediting. Okay, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Carrie. The next one on the list is car wash. It's currently a special use in, in the CB district. We do have, I know we have one car wash on the island.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's one that if we wanted to establish some supplemental regulations, and that's, the one that we have is, you know, about the scope that we wanna see, we could go out there and, you know, figure out the building footprint. You know, what are the features of that and actually write that into the supplemental regulations so that we make sure that any future ones, not only, if you wanna keep it as a special use permit, uh, not only do they have to get a special use permit, they have to, you know, come close to what we've already got. So you're not gonna have a, I couldn't imagine a big huge car wash, but they're out there.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the current trend in that is the express model, where they're trying to do a lot of cars.
And you see those out, uh, on typically more highway-oriented spaces? Yeah, you might would see that in the, the CLD, you know, out by the Lowe's Shopping Center or something like that, is where you would more likely see that, that style of car wash.
So that becomes an SS?
SS, and then, um, I would like to see it go to a PS in the CLD district. Again, just with, you know, just with some, you know, whatever regulations we might find that are applicable to car washes.
There's one out there, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, oh, well.
On Long, on Long Beach Road?
Yeah, there's one on Long Beach Road, there's one on the island.
And there, there's, uh, I don't, I'd have to look back, uh, it seems there, there, there may be one that's, uh, been circulated for the, the CLD, but I don't know whether they've actually made an application or not for that yet. So for the Lowe's Shopping Center area.
Madam Chair, you're suggesting PS or SS for the CLD district?
PS for the CLD, I think that's an appropriate location, but I think we ought to have some.
I should mention, in full disclosure, I have previously owned a car wash, which I do not currently own and I have absolutely no desire to have it.
I'm, I'm just putting it out there. There's a history there, but it's gonna stay in the history.
And I guess I should recuse myself on that one also, because I'm partners with the one, partners with the involved party with the one in front of the Lowe's, uh, grocery store at two eleven in Midway.
Okay, thank you. You're gonna move it to SS in CB, though, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And PS in the CLD. Yeah. Okay, moving on. The next one I'm showing is, uh, heating and air conditioning installation and repair with no open storage.
Madam Chair.
Wait, wait, yeah, we gotta.
And you're one for exercise and physical fitness centers?
In PCO.
All the way at the end at the overlay district.
Oh, my goodness, that one didn't get highlighted on my sheet, thank you for catching that.
Yeah, we have several in the, in the PCO.
Yeah, I see those now, yep. All my Ss were supposed to be highlighted in pink and they're not, so.
And, uh, I have another question. Where on this map is the PCO overlay district?
Uh, so it's really, uh, hang tight.
Keep my magnifying glass.
Yeah, the, the, sorry, this is, this map is usually, if you come to my office, it's.
Oh, yeah, but I got, I had one on the ship, I put this, this is much better.
Um, the, the PCO should be, I believe, the beach club overlay district, which is a hashed-out area around some of the CR. Hang tight, let me, uh.
Okay.
Let me pull that around on my ordinances here. Yeah, that's the beach club overlay district. You can see, it's around the CR, um, near the, the Long Beach, uh.
Okay, I think I might see a little bit of it there.
Yeah, it's, uh, it doesn't show up very well on this map, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, it doesn't, here, let me see if I can pull it along.
We get the map on the screen, would we be able to see it better?
If we could, we'd have to get Mike to zoom in quite a bit, probably.
That's about all I can tell with my magnifying glass.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's where she showed me it was at.
Yeah.
Down here in the CB, CR district, right there.
Okay.
Gray boxes.
Yeah, just, you can just barely tell it there. So exercise and physical fitness centers, uh, the special use and the PCO overlay.
Well, my question would be, why do we have, why is that even an issue in a beach club? For a fabric store, a florist, a furniture store in a beach club district? Does that even, is that even rational?
I can give you the purpose statement of the beach club overlay, if that would be helpful.
Yes, okay.
Uh, so the purpose of the beach private club overlay district is to provide reasonable regu- regulations of beach private clubs in the community in regard to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. All beach private clubs seeking authorization to operate in this district require obtaining a special use permit in accordance with the standards of this ordinance. So anything you wanna change in there, you know, one thing you can look back on is what is the purpose of this district? And does this use? is the purpose of this district and does this use align with the stated purpose in the ordinance?
Yeah, that's a little weird.
Did anybody still not know exactly where the CB is, I can walk, or that district?
No, I got it.
We got it, we found it.
I zoomed in on a little bit, I can show you.
So, would it make sense to remove those?
Uh, I'm not aware of any that currently exist there right now.
I mean, I think it would make total sense, I mean, they're permitted in, in the CB and the CLD.
Yeah, and the, I can give you some additional context too, because these, these overlay, for the most part, the CR zoning district, so, if you're curious about the, about what the intent of that is, uh, is to provide for, protect, and encourage a grouping of beachfront enterprises providing accommodations and recreations to persons wishing to lodge near the strand or participate in various water sports available to them. So, based on those, the underlying zoning district and the overlay district, you guys can kinda come to your own conclusions about what uses make sense in those, those areas.
Matt, for P- I'm sorry, PCO, tell me the purpose again?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
Uh, so, PCO, uh, is to provide reasonable regulation of beach private clubs in the community, uh, in regard to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. All beach private clubs seeking authorization to operate in this district require obtaining a special use permit in accordance with the standards of this ordinance.
It was not a mini-town, which is what it kinda looks like here.
Yeah, I mean, gas sales operations.
Yeah.
This is that area is residential, and residential has taken over the commercial lots as well.
Yeah, and the, we have seen that especially in the CR, uh, 'cause it allows single-family residential, a lot of that land has been developed for that purpose instead of commercial.
So, should we strike exercise and fitness centers, fabric stores, florists?
Garden centers.
And furniture stores from the PCO? Is everybody in agreement?
And gas sales operations.
That's, that sounds logical.
Now, we have farm craft and produce markets.
I could see them doing something on the weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see, I could see how that might work.
Something like that.
And there's, there, it's an SS, which means it has supplemental regulations around it, so.
Matt, would we, would we make the assumption that the, uh, like a farm craft or produce market might go under an itinerant merchant?
It could potentially unless it's something that's, so, an itinerant merchant is limited in the amount of time that they can be set up, it, you know, if you had a beach club that, uh, say they wanted to set up a permanent stand, and someone would occupy it on the weekends or something like that, that would probably fall more under what this definition is.
But, but for this, the way that farm craft and produce markets are listed, this would be a permanent operation there.
Yeah, 'cause they have standards, the supplemental standards have like restaurant, or restroom requirements, um, I'm looking those up right now, reasonable, within a reasonable walking distance, they have to provide parking, et cetera, and the, an itinerant merchant's just some guy that sets up to sell watermelons, you know, a few times a month, doesn't necessarily have to do something.
So, we've struck that as well?
That doesn't seem to fit either.
Okay, I agree.
Farm craft and produce markets, strike that from PCO.
And then, gas cell operations, I know we're working on Ss, but all these things that are in the, that are in the PCO.
All rolls.
Let's clean it up.
Go all good, we can see, knock it out. Okay, so, if we've dealt with those, then, if I didn't miss anything, the next thing I'm showing is heating and air conditioning installation and repair, no open storage, um, it's a special use in the CB district and permitted in the CLD district.
We just need supplemental?
I, I would think just supplemental regulations to those.
So, SS under CB, Madam Chair?
And PS?
And PS under CLD?
Now, why would you want supplemental off the island? For a heating and air?
Yeah.
Business?
Should it not just be P as permitted?
As P as permitted?
Yeah, I mean, why, yeah, why wouldn't it just be permitted? 'Cause it's just like any other business, why?
Haven't we had issues with, um, those entities about their outside storage and all their equipment outside and, um, the things?
Well, it says no open storage.
It says no open storage.
And the next one down is open storage allowed.
Next one is open storage.
And that has the S on it.
Yeah, okay, I see the point.
I wouldn't necessarily make it hard for, you know, a business like this to get established because when the air conditioner's broke, we want them to come.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do.
And I'm just gonna throw this question out here, you know, we're adding Ss to some of the Ps, but, but we're skipping a whole lot of cat- categories that we're not even looking at that just have Ps, so.
Yeah, I understand.
That was our direction.
And, and we'll, we'll go back, you know, we'll go back and pick those up.
It's like, why, why are we picking on these and not the others?
Yeah, we're not picking on them, it's just that they happen to fall in a line item where there is a special use, and so, it doesn't hurt to, to look at them. So, we're gonna do, uh, special use with supplemental conditions in the CB district and leave permitted uses in the CLD.
Yes.
Hotels and motels, special use in the CB and special use in the CR and permitted in the CLD. My thoughts are to add the supplemental, uh, regulations to the two Ss and leave the permitted as is.
The permitted in CLD though is how we got the Boardwalk Hotel, right?
No.
No, I thought that was CLD.
CLD's all on the mainland.
That's a CB down there.
CB, thank you, David.
Yeah, and I mean, they would still have to meet the hi- the height limit and, you know?
Right, but, um.
All the other protections.
It would allow us to put in some supplemental regulations that offer us a little more protection and, and, um, set the criteria for what the island wants to see.
Agreed. So, those, so CB and CR would become SS?
SSs.
Now, see, that's the question I have, like, the old, is it still called the Captain Cove Motel? If we change this, does that make that nonconforming?
Uh, it would depend on how you change it, so, so, let's say that, uh, you guys develop some supplemental regulations, um, you know, just like I talked about with the car wash, I mean, you could theoretically tailor those supplemental regulations to match the scale and development of existing development, 'cause you say, hey, this is what we want, we want it to be like the things that we already have and protect the things that we already have, so, let's say that, uh, if you set them up that way, the ones that you have, uh, if they don't, you know, going back to whether they have a special use permit or not, some of those really old ones probably don't, because they might have existed before special use permit was even a thing, um, but if you set up the supplemental regulations, uh, that hurricane comes in, blows the building down, uh, if those are crafted appropriately, they could essentially just build it back like it was with the knowledge that they'll have to additionally probably seek a special use permit 'cause they didn't have one, but, uh, you could at least reestablish what you already have, you know?
Yeah, and I would, I would make a request that when we do go through, back through these to make what the supplemental regulations are, that the stakeholders be included in that conversation.
Yeah, because when you go nonconforming?
Mm-hmm, yep.
There's different kinds of insurance you have to buy and, you know, when you say seventy-five, is it seventy-five percent threshold?
For commercial.
For commercial, well, that's seventy-five percent of the replacement cost, not the value.
It's, uh, uh, so, what we look at is the, uh, the depreciated tax value of the structure, so, it doesn't include the land first, um, and secondly, it's the.
Oh, yeah, it's way lower number.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a, you don't go out and get a appraisal.
Right.
Right.
You know, we go straight to the, the tax record of that, and, uh, yeah, then when you apply for permits, we look at, okay, what's the value of, the estimated value of the work that you're doing versus, uh, the other two determiners?
Appreciated tax value.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that.
So, that's, that's a fair calculation for the owner, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what, I've, I've never worked anywhere that used anything different.
It's not hard to hit that, it's not as hard to hit that number.
Especially with older development, yeah.
Yes.
Some of these buildings, the, the value's gone down, uh, just because of the age of the building.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion on that? So, moving on to the next S on the list, takes us over to night clubs and social clubs. Those are a special use in the O and I, which we do not currently have, the CB, the CR, and the CLD. I think that, uh, my opinion is that the special use is, uh, a warranted designation in those areas and that they should have supplemental conditions, just because of potential noise levels and outside, uh, crowds, things like that. Anybody feel different about that?
Yes, so SS?
Okay, nursing home, Matt, do you have a definition for nursing home? Is that in-home care or is that a, an established facility?
Let's take a look, shall we? Scroll all the way down to the end here. Typically, a nursing home is an established facility, uh, in my experience, but let's see if we have a more illuminating definition in here. Oh, we do, this is, this is a long one, okay, uh, strap in. A facility, however named, which is advertised, announced, or maintained for the express purpose, express or implied purpose, uh, providing nursing or convalescent care for three or more persons unrelated to the licenses. Nursing home is a home for chronic or convalescent patients who on condition, uh, are not as a rule acutely ill and who do not usually require special facilities such as the operating room, x-ray laboratory fi- facilities. Uh, a nursing home provides care for persons who have remedial ailments or other ailments for which medical and nursing care is indicated, who however are not sick enough to require general hospital care. Nursing care is their primary need, but they will require continuing medical supervision, if that's even remotely helpful.
So, three-plus persons, right, Matt?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
And maybe the intent here was that people who give elder care at home, I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know the history of all these.
Well, I think typically residential is, is where those places are allowed, am I correct, Matt?
Yeah, um, and we do have a, a couple, so, this kinda gets into whether you need, you know, definitions for ones that are in-home, you know, you have things like family care homes that might provide care within a residential atmosphere, a single-family home for like, and we do have a definition in here, um, you know, for people that, uh, might have permanent, uh, physical disability, um, and there are some state guidelines for that too, um, so typically that would fall under something like a family care home if it's in a single-family residential, whereas a nursing home where you're providing for more than three, you know, more than three people, a certain amount, that's typically a dedicated facility in my experience, um, but that's, uh, a thing that we'll wanna make sure is, is well-defined and categorized in our ordinance for sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could we not pull out residential care and nursing home and have that two separate?
We could.
I, I think we could, I was just gonna say, I know we're trying to consolidate this list and make it easier to deal with, but in some cases, we need a better, I mean, having two or three or four people in your home is much different than allowing, uh.
A thirty-bed facility.
A thirty-plus bed facility.
And, and that may be one where we lean on our, you know, like I said, we have a nursing home, we have a family care home, it may be that we need to tweak those definitions to make sure that it's clear that one is a standalone facility and one is in a, a residential facility instead.
Residential, less than three and nursing home, greater than three.
Yeah, something like that, yes, sir.
Do we have this currently, do you, that we know of, Matt? Any of these kind of three-plus people in our, in our residential?
In a single-family home? No, not that I'm aware of, no, ma'am. Now, that being said, some of the state regulations for that trump local zoning, so, there may be some that have permits from the state to provide that type of care that don't necessarily have to come in and, and get a zoning permit for something like that.
So, does it, does it seem reasonable to everyone then if we split these out, that the smaller in-home care facility would be allowed in the residential zones?
I think you have to based on the state regulations.
And the nursing, the, what we all think is official nursing home would be probably in the CLD.
CLD.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we have, we have one in the, uh, Pine Forest, and they have a, a nursing facility there.
So, a fam- so, a family care home would reside in the residential zones, a, a nursing home facility, three-plus more people would go to CLD?
That's right.
Yes.
Where we already have that is PS listed here. So, we're just striking this from the R zones?
Correct.
The official nursing home.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
But we're gonna add, we're gonna add in.
Family care home.
We're gonna, we're gonna make these definitions make sense, essentially.
And it seems like then if we're, if we're gonna add, allow those in the residential sections, that they would be permitted with supplemental regulations.
Right, yeah.
Next item that I see is rental of goods, merchandise, and equipment, no outside storage or display of goods, and that is a, um, special use in the CB district, it's permitted in CLD and permitted in AD.
We don't have anything like this in CB, do we, currently?
No.
You can ride down the road and see golf carts sitting beside the buildings.
Think about, uh, some of the businesses have outdoor, during the day, certain times they have the merchandise sitting outside.
Also, like, for instance, the surf shop rents surfboards, um.
Yeah, we actually, this is, uh, golf cart and low-speed sales and rentals is a totally separate use in our table of use, it's just FYI on that one.
Okay, my bad.
Um, but yes, uh.
I mean, if there's no outside storage, I'm not sure why you have to have a special use permit.
Why it has to be an S, it could be permitted with supplemental regulations.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Is that reasonable?
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times that's tied to another retail facility that also.
Right.
Might rent a surfboard or something like that, but they're also selling stuff in the main shop.
Then it's only on the mainland, though. Not only on the mainland then, if it's, if it's in the CLD?
Sorry, I lost my place.
Well, the CB, we just wanted to change it to a PS.
CB goes to PS for that. Okay, it's not on my chart at all.
Oh.
So, you and I must've had the same chart.
Maybe I'm just looking at the wrong line. I was looking at the wrong line, thank you.
Okay.
We'll change that to PS.
Yes.
Yes, in the CB district, and then it's permitted in CLD. Oh, boy, this is, becomes a hot topic.
Yeah, this is a fun one.
So, restaurants including fast food and drive-through services, they're allowed in the CB as a special use permitted on, uh, in the CLD.
Well, I, I did read the survey, um, and it was very clear from the tick marks I made of how many times our citizens said they don't want drive-throughs on our island, that it is not a desired commercial business on the island.
But, but we already have some.
Yeah, I think, again, we get in, we might get into the definition, because somebody, you know, the, the few that we have are not quite set up like a, a chain.
Right.
Drive-through might be.
Can we make a supplemental regulation that would address how much traffic?
Mm-hmm.
How far can we go?
Here's what we can do, 'cause this is something that I've had many opportunities to think about, it turns out.
I'm sure.
Um, one, we need to separate, uh, these definitions for restaurants, because we have, currently for restaurants, we have restaurants excluding fast food and drive-through services, and then restaurants including fast food and drive-through services, um, so, you could have a fast food restaurant that doesn't have a drive-through service at all, you go to a downtown, you see a Starbucks there, well, that most people would consider Starbucks a, a fast food restaurant, uh, you walk in, you get a cup of coffee, and you walk out, um, so, it's the presence of the drive-through or not, and that's really the determining factor, you either have a restaurant without a drive-through, or you have a restaurant with a drive-through, um, that's how I recommend, in this instance, that's one where we would, you wouldn't necessarily create more, uh, more categories, but you need to refine the categories that you have, um.
Want the bank? Want the bank to have a drive-through?
Sure.
And.
The alternative, and then what you do is, so you look at what, what drive-throughs do we have here? Once again, one of the qualities of those drive-throughs, et cetera. What drive-throughs do we see in more suburban or automobile-oriented developments? You know, in the mainland, I had the unfortunate opportunity to work on several of them in Leland. But, so what's the difference between those two? You know, is it the stacking? Is it the, the vehicle trips per day? Is it the, you know, what are the quantifiable things that separate, you know, a Pelican seafood, OKI scoop shop versus a Burger King? How can we split that difference between those two? One thing we can't do through zoning is exclude a specific business person, entity, operator, based on the zoning, but we can make sure that if somebody comes here, they comply with the form of development that we, that we want to see. Now, whether they choose to not locate here, because that doesn't conform with their business practices or not, it's a decision that's up to each individual person.
See where we are today. So we have the Pelican seafood.
Which is for sale, by the way.
Is it for sale? That's sad.
And then we have the scoop shop. Did they, the scoop shop ask for a special use to go forward? And, and have they moved forward with building that?
As far as I know, it's there.
Yeah, and it took them, it took about six months to actually get that permit issued. It failed or was, was put off numerous times at council.
Yeah, I understand the history of it, but is it there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have two on the island right now.
Does.
That are food establishment, drive-through related, correct?
Then you still have the, the old Hardee's building.
Hardee's building is there, yeah, that's right.
I don't think.
Now, it wasn't used as a drive-through in the last restaurant, to my knowledge.
It's been several restaurants since it was a drive-through.
Yeah, it's a, a deck where the drive-through was right now, I think, right?
It was a pretty good Chinese restaurant years ago.
So for now, until we can better define or differentiate these, my recommendation would be to change that S to an SS.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we can, if we clarify it, to hold it, clarify it, then it might become.
Technically, Matt, excuse me, what are some of the stipulations we could put on for future requests?
So you could do a maximum amount of stacking. So stacking is to space you a lot for the cars that are waiting in the drive-through. You can stipulate distances from intersections or certain roads for where the drive-through aisles are. Additional screening and buffering requirements beyond what the minimums we have in our ordinance. You could also get in, potentially get into like a vehicle trip per day calculation, you know, to figure out, okay, what's the maximum number of, you know, trips we actually want to see using this drive-through? Stuff like that to, what you do there is you kind of weed out some of the more high-volume ones with something like that. You know, you get, I mean, I know from experience, you know, you come in and Burger King wants to come in, and they, they say, we need, we need, we need space for ten cars to sit in our drive-through. You know, if you say, hey, we, we limit should have, you know, four or three, or whatever it ends up being. You know, that, that's something that they're gonna take a pretty good look at, you know, in determining whether they even want to locate in a, in a place, yeah.
How about lot size?
Lot size, absolutely. Make sure you have the room for it.
I, I think it's hard to say, you can't have drive-throughs when others have them. You know, you know, what, but you know, I think, you know, you could increase the lot size for a, for a drive-through product. And, you know, there's a lot of additional regulations that could go into that. You know, your, your drive-through width has to be X amount. Now, we need fire and safety to be able to get on the outside of it. Fire truck needs X amount of width, this at this. And then that would, you know, between the lot size, because most commercial lots on the island are twenty-foot wide by super deep. You know, there's only, there's just not much area left. And then when you think about it in a purchase standpoint, well, okay, let's, we're gonna bring, you know, this company here, large drive-through company, and we're gonna have to buy, you know, from street end to street end. And you start looking down the commercial district, and you say, well, this company, you know, obviously, they clearly have a very good income off of that. They're not gonna sell for a one-time payment. You know, these large companies, they're never gonna find a plot that they would necessarily pay for to, to buy that whole end cap or something. But you, I think you still have to give opportunity to people, because a drive-through can be a large corporate chain, or it can be a small individual also, and, and as well as a local.
Yeah, my brother-in-law and sister-in-law have a, it's called Crossroads Grill, but it's in Silar City, and it's, it's basically set up like a cookout. They don't have indoor seating. They have the drive-through, a walk-up window, and a couple of picnic tables out front. And I will say that they were a real asset to their community during COVID, because they were set up perfectly, and they just broke records after record after record. You know, three meals a day, six days a week. You know, people that are disabled appreciate a drive-through. If you've got kids in car seats, that, there's a lot of benefits to a drive-through. But again, you know.
I think what we're looking to define, and what I've heard our citizens say, is we, we want to foster and encourage the smaller kind of mom-and-pop things. And we really don't care to have the big chain operations on the island.
Yeah, it's just a matter of how we.
So we have to define it so that.
Carefully.
And also, if you look at the land use plan, and also you see more commentary in the survey, people want a more walkable community. They want less people zipping around in golf carts and, and, you know, burning fossil fuels in their cars just to go get a sandwich. I mean, this is a very small town. When you just think of our geography, to David's point, there's not a lot of property that's even conducive to drive-throughs. But as we, as a planning board, think about what our citizens really want our community to be, I think I'm hearing that they want a more walkable community, one that's more pedestrian-centered. I kept hearing about open spaces and greenway and ride my bike and walk. And I think those, if we keep that vision in mind, that aligns with the land use plan that I know is gonna be updated, but I think you're gonna hear the same thing in the land use plan update.
No, yeah, I certainly hope so.
So I think, so my question is, in CLD, do we want it just to be permitted? Should we have any supplementals in commercial low-density around these?
And our commercial area is small.
Yeah.
And it's declining. It's not growing. Residential building, commercial all the time, and you, over, in the overlay district, most of that's all residential. That was commercial. So, you know, it, it's very capable to become a walkable commercial district with some sidewalks, you know, crossings and stuff like that, even though those are through the state and require their permission and so forth.
Well, can I, I just point one thing out, which I think Carrie and I had talked about. You know, when I think of a walkable commercial area, whether it's downtown Wilmington or downtown Southport, you know, I believe this is, that was the original intention of our commercial areas, because our lots are twenty feet wide. But in those areas, you, you only have street-side parking. And we don't offer that in our commercial area. So, you know, you park, whether you pay or not, and, and then you get out and you walk from this business to that business, and, you know.
A lot of outdoor seating.
Yeah, that is, it's very appealing, but it's kind of, even though I believe it was probably the original intention, it's not how our commercial area has developed over time. So, anyway, that's just food for thought, on walkability.
So I know, I know our chairman wants to sort of keep us on a time limit here. So in CLD, are we leaving that as fully permitted for restaurant drive-throughs?
So my thoughts on that, which we alluded to earlier, is why everything on the mainland is CL, well, not everything, but why there's most, the CLD is on the mainland. It seems to me that it would be a good planning effort to start to look at those areas. I think maybe at the beginning, we didn't expect as much development as we're seeing now.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
But, you know, I, I hate to see residences next door, you know, be next door to a drive-through. It seems like that we could, as a, as a planning effort, better define areas where we want to focus residential, where we want to encourage businesses and other, other developments. And I'm scared to even ask what that process might be.
So do, so again, I'm sorry, but do we, do we want to have fully permitted in CLD for drive-throughs? I guess is my basic question. Should there be some stipulations around that in the CLDs, as it currently exists, to Madam Chair's point?
As it currently exists, it.
We probably need a PS, right?
Probably be a PS, just because we don't.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Control where it's, we don't have any stipulation over where it's gonna be located in that district.
Right.
The southwest corner of Middleton and 211, that has very little NC DOT access. Is, is that correct? You're coming off of 211. The south, you know, like, from standing where we are, the southwest inside corner, which is across from Lowe's Grocery Store on the west side. That area is CLD. That has very little.
On Middleton, there's not much, that's right.
The DOT is really limited the access to that property.
And then the, and even going down 211 with the widening project, you know, the access will probably be even more limited. So it'll be tough to get in and out.
Yeah, I remember them coming to council a few years ago, trying to get DOT to give them more access to that land, and they wouldn't give the access to that land. So, you know, when you look at the CLD and drive-through areas, drive-through possibilities, typically, you, you're going to want to be close to an intersection, on ramp or off ramp. So, you know, ultimately, that, that's a, that's a very, very small area there around that intersection. Once you get around the curve on Midway Road, after you pass the storage facility to the left, the county has stated very clearly, they will not extend commercial down Midway on the left side of Midway. Now, on the right side, that is Pine Forest coming back into Midway Road, I believe. So, you know, your, your drive-through areas currently in the CLD shown on the map are very tight to this intersection with really limited DOT access to the land.
That's a valid point.
Yeah, I think there's a forty-four acre tract of land for sale over there now with the antenna, the tower on it. And there's no access to that land off of 211. The access has to come through the Midway Commons Shopping Center to get to that land. And then that's gonna take an agreement between that developer and the forty-four acre purchaser. So that Lowe's Grocery Store area, that may be the only area to really put a drive-through over there.
Yeah, that, that's probably a pretty fair assessment, because the Pine Forest is in a planned unit development under a special use permit. You know, if they wanted to modify to allow something like that, it would go back through a public hearing modification. You know, even on, you know, off of Long Beach, you know, most of that's already development or part of the, the airport, you know, kind of complex over there.
Right.
And, yeah, and the one section that's not developed currently has pretty limited access off of 211 and Middleton eventually. I mean, but definitely, you know, something to think about going forward, you know. How do we? You know, if there's incompatible uses, you know, what, what does that look like? How do we, you know, make sure that we can bring them into compatibility as much as possible, or exclude them if they can't be brought into incompatibility between the two?
I mean, but the reality is the way, yeah, the way our CLD is laid out, though, there is residential in it, mixed in now. And that's my point, is I don't think somebody wants a drive-through next to their house, right?
The thing to David's point, a lot of these restaurants are going to want access, and they want high-traffic count. Easy in, easy out. They're not gonna be wanting to get in a residential area.
Right.
They don't want that, because it harms their business. They're not gonna do it theirself.
Well, it's my firm belief that where there's a will, there's a way, and where a lot of money's involved, there's also a way. So I think we should protect our town and the residents in the CLD by at least providing some stipulations associated with it. That's all I'm saying. Not that it's not permitted, not that we make it impossible, but I think there should be the right due diligence around it, is all I'm saying, to your point. I get your point, David.
They're not gonna be wanting to put it there anyhow. I've never seen a restaurant come in and purposely build in a residential section. I've never seen that in all my years. It just doesn't, business-wise, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, normally, commercial will take the street, you know, normally, commercial is the street frontage down the road, and then on down, there'll be an entrance, obviously, into a neighborhood that tucks in behind it. And it may come out back to the road on the other side, but normally, the commercial has a frontage, and then the residential has access from the ends, you know, going back in between.
May be some fencing in behind to protect.
Right.
Visual and noise, I can see, you know, behind the restaurant, but most restaurants or drive-throughs are not gonna go into the middle of a residential area and build.
May I offer a compromise?
Yes, please.
Why don't I, for the, because it'll be different once on the, this is an instance where I would recommend different supplemental regulations for the CB and the CLD. Why don't I pull some example regulations, you know, from some surrounding automobile-oriented suburban-style uses, which is probably what we would see in the CLD, and let you guys take a look at those and see if they make sense one way or another. That way, we can, because right now, we're all talking about what those might look like. Why don't I come back to you guys when we get to that point in the draft with some examples, and we can take a look at whether it makes sense or not.
And maybe include our buffer requirements or occupancy levels and the options that they have to get to that level of, of, of a buffer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Definitely.
Because you don't, you know what's happening today. You don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow.
Exactly.
And.
Okay, all right, so let's.
But that's a pending one, right? We're gonna hold that out?
Let's put that one to rest for right now and move on. Truck stop, it's a special use in the CLD. It's permitted in the ID, which we don't have. If it's gonna stay in the CLD, I can't imagine why anybody would want a truck stop here, but.
I don't know, we're getting overpasses.
But if it's gonna stay there, I would definitely advocate for special.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly limit.
Oh, yes.
Size, number of pumps, et cetera, things like that.
So SS on truck stop in CLD?
Yes.
Can I back up one minute before we leave this section? I had ended up discussing this with Brady a little bit. I think Matt's aware of it, but I, in watching the previous meeting, you discussed private clubs. There was an unfortunate scenario that happened in the town of Cary while I lived there. A strip club opened right in downtown, two blocks from the elementary school and the library. So it created quite an uproar. It was actually three blocks from my house. Obviously, they didn't have anything to prevent that from happening. So they were trying to find a way to shut it down. I'm not sure what the circumstances were, but they lost their alcohol license. And the owner converted it to a private club, all nude.
Do I owe to you or something?
I'm pretty sure it's still there, so I just want to throw it out there that we need to.
Well, that would be under the sexual-oriented business.
Well, it, it is, but I would also say that maybe we need to include private club there.
Now, a private club could be Elks, it could be Moose.
I, I am not opposed to the Elks and the Moose.
Well, when you start, when you start looking at private clubs, that's gonna fall under that aspect.
I'm just saying, like, maybe sexually-oriented businesses and private clubs. In other words, if the private club is a sexually-oriented one, we.
Well, that would still fall under sexual-oriented business, no matter if it's a private club. Well, that would still fall under sexual oriented business, no matter if it's a private club or not.
But if it's set up as a private club, a private club's a private club. They can do whatever they want to do in there.
Okay, okay. Okay. Hang on, hang on. Um, we have, um, we have nightclubs and social clubs in this group that we're talking about. We also, in another section that we previously covered, have private clubs. What I would say to the new members is, we're not going to go back and, and go through all of those again, but if you do have specific concerns, please email me with those. So that we, so that we.
I'll email you.
Yeah, so that we can, we can get them, because we, we spend a lot of time getting to where we, where we are.
We're very close.
And we're getting, we're getting, we're getting close.
Yes, we are.
Very close.
Okay, so next category is transportation and, uh, we have taxi stands, which are a special use in the CB district permitted in the CLD. We used to have a taxi service here. Do we, does anybody know if that still exists?
It's still running, but it's still running.
But they don't have a physical location on the island.
Yeah, and that's a, like, kind of further complicated these days with the.
Yep, with the. The whole Uber thing, right? Well, we're talking, I think we're, I guess we're talking about.
Need a stand for the Uber.
Right, a stand.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't use zoning to necessarily regulate a, like, a mobile, you know, Uber or anything like that. Uh, this would be referring to the physical permanent location that someone would have.
So if we're going to keep the, if we're going to keep it in the CB district, it again, seems like supplemental regulations would be appropriate.
SS?
SS. Okay, wholesale sales. Matt, what kind of definition do we have for that?
I, I already started scrolling down there because I knew that. As soon as I saw that on the table, I said, well, what is that? Bear with me here. That is something that we'll need to establish a definition for.
We need a definition for that.
But appear. I mean, the common definition would probably be like a warehouse sale or something like that, where not only are goods stored, but maybe they're also offered for, for sale within that location or.
Right.
If you've ever been out to, uh, have a couple of locations in Wilmington where you go, like, you just buy a pallet of stuff that's maybe returns from Lowe's or something like that, that kind of thing.
So we're showing it as a special use in the CLD district. Um, what's the, uh, board's thoughts on that designation in that zoning district? And again, if we're going to leave it S, I think we need some, um, supplemental regulations. But it might be easier to define that once we get a definition. So maybe we should just hold on to this one and.
Yeah, I, I think so. But certainly some supplemental regulations can be crafted for something like that pretty easily.
And then we have the category of other uses.
It's always fun.
And the first one is agriculturally related businesses. They're special use in the CLD district.
Um, and if I may, I don't want to, obviously don't want to step on the board's discussion here. We have a couple of kind of interrelated uses here between agricultural forestry, bona fide farms, which a bona fide farm is an agricultural use, so that one that's in there twice. Uh, agriculturally related businesses, farm stands, um. Typically, these are all categorized under a bona fide farm. And the reason for that is there's state definitions and criteria for what you have to be to be considered a bona fide farm. And if you are a bona fide farm, then your agricultural related uses, your farm stand that's on that property, et cetera, it's all a part of the farm operation. So the intent here may be to say that farms are okay, and then if these are detached from a farm, they're okay somewhere else. I just want you all to kind of keep that in mind that, um, you know, if, if we have a category of bona fide farm and somebody has a bona fide farm, then well, they can have a farm stand on that piece of property to sell whatever they're growing on the site. They can have people come do a tour, pick their own berries or whatever, um, you know, as a part of that farm operation. Um, so if you do want to separate those out, it, you probably need to keep it in the mind frame of, well, I don't, we want to keep those operations on the farm and limit where they can go off the farm to, to establish another, you know, stand where maybe they're selling their goods retail somewhere else in the town or something like that, so.
I think farming is as small town as you can get. I don't think that they should be limited at all. And, and there is a lot of farming still in Brunswick County, in between us and Leland. Um, you know, we have tree farms, we have sod farms, we have, you know, dairy or, or cows, I guess you'd say. We have, you know, uh, soy, you know, I mean, we have all kinds of farming all the way around us. When, when I see agriculturally related businesses, you know, I see, you know, I see everything from, from, um, sales of, of farming equipment, repair farming equipment, barns with hay stacked up in them, um, grain sales, you know, I think out on eighty-seven, there's a, a place out there with a white horse, they sell grain. I mean, you know, and you know, that is, farming is, is, is keeping something as small town as you possibly can.
So Matt, how do we, how do we differentiate then between the actual farming activities and retail operations where somebody has a, you know, a produce stand?
Yeah, it, it's kind of a good question. Um, you know, a bona fide farm is, uh, I guess defined in the, we might have a definition in our ordinance, but there's a, a better statutory definition out there, I'm pretty sure. Cause having worked in a county, this, this comes up a lot because you do have a lot of farming regs out there. You know, the, I would even go so far as to say, you know, if we, if we're looking at retail, you know, if you're looking at, and especially under a model of consolidation, you know, I don't care if it, if you allow retail in a place, it doesn't matter if it came from the farm down the street or, you know, the grocery store, you know, that's, that's a retail under, under that type of food sales or whatever you want to end up calling it. The, yeah, I mean, we don't, I did look to see, we don't define these agriculturally related businesses. So, uh, it might be worth looking into because that's, that's a great question. Does that include like farm equipment sales and grain silos and et cetera, um, versus, uh, you know, when I took a first blush look at it, I thought about, you know, like selling the materials that you act, or selling the products of the farm, which is, as I said already, a function of the bona fide farm.
Allowed in CB with a special use.
Yeah, um, I mean.
So does it seem reasonable then to look at these first six activities? And make sure that we adequately define them and that we put them in an appropriate category?
Yeah. I think we need to think about how we're defining these things and then, and even in the broader context of how are we, you know, looking at retail sales in general, you know, if, like I mentioned, it, if you have a location where you set up a building where you're regularly selling your produce versus a grocery store, you know, what, what's the actual difference in that operation?
Right.
Yeah, and we have bona fide farms is allowed in all of the residential districts, just permitted.
Yeah.
So does that mean I can put a fence out back from a horse?
A, a farm by, you know, the Department of Agriculture is, is stated X amount of acres are graded.
Right, yes.
They have to maintain a, a yearly, um, checklist, I imagine, or something.
Yeah, you have to.
Revenue requirements.
Yeah, it's not so easy to become a farm.
It's probably not appropriate to have that.
It's pretty difficult. You have to have, like you mentioned, there's acreage requirement, there's a, you can get a tax exemption because farms have state tax exemptions for, uh, so there's four or five things that can qualify you as a bona fide farm. And, uh, like I said, I work with this a lot in the counties, because in counties, bona fide farms are exempt from all zoning requirements. Just anybody who didn't know that, that's a rule. Um, and so we had a lot of people that would try to like, like you just said, set up a farm in their backyard. And when I say, well, you gotta be bona fide, and they, it's impossible to kind of meet those criteria on a small residential lot.
Okay, all right. Well, let's not, let's, go ahead if you have a question.
No, I was just gonna say, I wonder why we have the P's there in our residential.
I think that's, I mean, I think we need to look at this block of six as a, as a whole.
You need to work on it.
And, and deal with that. I don't want to get us, get too much in the weeds about talking about the benefits of farms and such. Cause we only have one more line item and, uh, I promised to get us out by eleven thirty today. So the next one is, uh, storage outside, completely enclosed structure. It is a special use in the CLD and a special use in the AD.
Okay, how can it be outside?
Would that be like a fence around it?
I would think that would be like a, a fence.
Okay.
A fence.
Give us a definition, Matt.
I'm already on top of.
Two, two different definitions for, uh.
We don't define any of this. Um, no, this is one, uh, you know, as you read that and looking through the ordinance, that's definitely something we want to define, you know, is this a, is this a setup where we have, you know, you might have a, you know, out on two eleven, a, a self-storage facility that also allows for you to park your boat in a location and that's, and not necessarily in the storage, you might, they might have a open storage yard essentially. Is that what this is talking about? Is it talking about some other setup entirely? Um, that's something we'll have to define and.
So we need definitions for those.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And it may be that we can, like I said, take some of these things and put them together in a way that makes more sense than what it is right now and then look at where they should go.
So, Madam Chair, I have a, have a question. So at the bottom of my table of uses, there's a note. My, Lisa, do you have the same? I'd like Matt to explain that note.
Bottom pages.
Is it the one that says, any structure?
Yes.
Okay, would you like, would you read that for everybody?
What, what the note says, any structure permitted for construction after the date of adoption of this ordinance and located in any residential zoning district other than CR and at any time thereafter made available for temporary rental to the general public for the occupancy of more than fourteen individuals shall be without further administration act in, action immediately, thereby classified as a hotel motel use of property and considered a non-permitted use in that residential district.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, the, this, uh, ordinance note, uh, conflicts with the current statutory definitions for single-family residential. Um, there are certain definitions that, uh, the state statute says the local jurisdictions have to match what's in building code requirements. Uh, building code, uh, definitions for single-family residential, uh, allow for that single-family structure to be used for, uh, for permanent homeownership. It can be used for rental. I mean, all these are, are included. So once you say, and further, we can't stipulate, uh, through local zoning, uh, interior design requirements. So I can't look at the zoning and say, or look at a single-family home and say, well, you can only have X number of bedrooms in the single-family home. The state preempts us from, from doing that, that type of review. Um, so between those two things, one saying that, well, we can't look at, we can't actually even say how many bedrooms you can have in a single-family home. You can have thirty bedrooms in a, however small of a space you can cram it into. Uh, and then the, 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 the statutory and regulatory definition for a single-family home that allow it to be for rent. Um, you know, this provision in the ordinance is currently unenforceable because we can't say that whether it's for rent or for sale makes it a hotel or motel. It's, it has to be a single-family home by the, the criteria that's set up in the state statutes.
So, so my point is, this needs to be struck from the, the established table of uses, because it's, we can't enforce it.
I think it's unenforceable, yes ma'am. That's right, yes ma'am.
I just want to clarify, if we're cleaning up the table of uses, let's make it.
And once again, if there's, you know, questions about, uh, short-term rentals, et cetera, that's a gigantic topic of conversation that requires some, probably several sets of meetings to even weed through that topic because there's court cases, uh, et cetera, that kind of impact how we can regulate those.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Allowing me to address that, just.
We did it.
We have gone through now and looked primarily at the S's. We did, um, look at a couple of other uses as they, um, came up in discussion. So Matt, the next step is that we're going to try to craft these, um, or find some applicable supplemental regulations for the board's consideration for these that we've identified as SS.
Yeah, so my, uh, my plan going forward, uh, in what I have prepared for your next regular meeting, whenever that ends up being, is as much of this table of uses that I can get through to take into account everything that you guys have done with the, with the special uses, uh, as well as any additional consolidation efforts that I can make, any supplemental regulations that seem to make sense. Uh, I'm going to start drafting that and getting it in front of you. Um, like I said, just as, as much as I can. Uh, if it takes two rounds, because I can only work through, you know, if there's two hundred things in here, you know, then that'll be the case. But, um, that's my next step. I'll have, for anything that I get through, you know, if we've identified it as being supplemental regulations, I'll have some, some examples of what that could look like for you to consider, uh, definitions where we don't have them, uh, as well as any of the recommendations that you've gone through today. So, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Get down into it, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we'll be getting an email from Madam Clerk about rescheduling our September regular meeting. Um, and hope that we can get, get everybody's calendars aligned. We have been having these special meetings. We had one in, I believe, June, July, and now this one in August. Um, our intention was to continue having those, to work through the table of uses. I know in talking to Madam Clerk that her September calendar is, uh, she's going to be away from the office some and, um, she has several meetings. So what's, what's the pleasure of the board in terms of scheduling our next special meeting? Can you give us the dates that are just totally off the table for you?
We could, or, um, we can make it an agenda item in the September meeting to schedule.
Okay, let's, let's do that then.
Okay, and we'll put those dates in the packet so that everybody's looking at them.
Thank you, let's do that. Um, if there's not anything else, I would say, it sounds like the storm is coming upon us. I would encourage everybody to be safe. I hope you're all safe and your property's safe. And for our folks in the audience and our folks watching, I hope you all stay safe in the storm. Um, we're all in this together and we take care of each other together. So it's, uh,
Right.
Oak Island's a good place to be for that. Nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank y'all very much.